Good evening. Welcome to the Henrico County School Board Work Session. Today is Thursday, November 14th, and we will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would remain standing as you're able for the moment of silence. And that concludes our moment of silence. You may be seated.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. We will move along to the next agenda item, which is closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under items A1 and A7, a section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific school board employees, and consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation of civil nature involving Henrico County Public Schools staff and students because consultation in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating and litigating position of the school board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will now go into closed session. We will reconvene the work session at the conclusion of our closed meeting. We're back. Colleagues, we will now certify closed session. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
I move that the school board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each school board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorized in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Cincella. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Closed session has been certified. Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an opportunity to review the 2025 legislative priorities. As you know, last time we were together, you all rolled up your sleeves and spent some time digging into the areas you wanted to ensure advocacy for the General Assembly session that'll kick off in January. And so we'll review those updated priorities now, and we'll seek your approval at this evening's meeting. Mr. Blackstone.
Thank you. And good afternoon, Chair Atkins, board members, Dr. Cashwell. I'm here today to present for your consideration these recommended school board legislative priorities for the 2025 General Assembly session that begins in January, using last year's priorities as a baseline and following the interactive session that we had on October 24th that Dr. Cashwell referred to. And also using additional feedback that you've provided since then, we've compiled your input and synthesized them into these actionable priorities. Additional input was also provided from our division leadership team and from discussions in the K-12 legislative advocacy community at large. We feel these capture the essence of the overall feedback and discussion and are the most pragmatic areas of advocacy for next session. And I believe that you had a list of the draft priorities in a Word document form that has the items that are underlined that are changed, but I will review those as we go through the presentation for the benefit of the public. And based upon your comments about keeping the framework from last year's priorities, those are largely intact, with changes or additions, as I mentioned, noted. A few items from last year have been deleted because they were either passed into law or otherwise affected by legislation from the previous session. So that's my introduction to the various areas. We start with academic achievement. The first item is new and reflects the need for the state to provide additional state funding for targeted services aligned with the state's new performance and support framework to support student achievement directly. The second item under this heading is to support additional funding and expanded flexibility for English learner services. Continuing with academic achievement, a third priority in this area represents our continued support for dual enrollment for both students and teachers by expanding offerings and helping teachers meet the requirements to teach these classes. Also, based on the board's input from the last work session, we are bringing back a priority from two years ago to implement a code of ethics for special education advocates to promote an approach that helps both parents, advocates, and schools. For those of you who may not be aware or were here a couple of years ago, we did have a bill to address this that was unsuccessful. Under the area of funding, support specific revisions to Virginia's K-12 funding formula that promote full SOQ funding included in the July 2023 J-Larke Study. And also to oppose any unfunded mandates. A couple more under funding. We support state funding to recruit and retain critical instructional, operational, and support staff and to remove obstacles to their hiring. And lastly, to support legislation and funding that improves equitable access to high-speed internet and appropriate technology for all students, communities, and school staff. Obviously, teacher and staff recruitment continues to be one of the biggest priorities for all school divisions in Virginia and in the nation right now. So we want to support state funding to address critical teacher shortages, including increased teacher pay to the national average and other areas to address these critical needs, such as increased funding for the Virginia Teaching Scholarship Loan Program and some others. We also want to support actions to create additional avenues for teachers to obtain licenses and for others to enter the teaching profession. Continuing with instructional personnel and teacher recruitment, we also support legislation to remove barriers for those wanting to enter the teaching profession and also to reduce workloads by finding duplicate or nonessential requirements that could be eliminated. We've also added the word completely at the beginning of item four to our efforts to eliminate the support cap. And lastly, under this area of personnel and recruitment, there are two specific items for which we will seek bills to address. Item five is to make permanent the extension of the 180 days that long-term substitute teachers can be employed during one school year. We already have a member of our delegation who's agreed to sponsor this legislation, and we also plan to seek a Senate sponsor. The sixth item is to support, we'll also seek sponsors for this item to close an existing loophole so that teachers will have to be fully licensed, not provisionally licensed, to obtain continuing contract status. Without question, the safety and wellness of HCPS students and staff are the school board's top priority every single day. Your commitment to school security and students' health and wellness is reflected here with support for funding and resources to continue our status as a leader in the physical security of schools and campuses. Once again, this year, we support legislation that promotes enhanced safe storage of weapons and parental accountability. We have tweaked the third priority here a little bit this year to provide additional clarity as to exactly what we'd like to see in terms of support for our wraparound community services for students in the greatest need, adding the terms "school counselors" and "licensed mental health professionals." Continuing with safe schools and student wellness, we continue to advocate for resources available to families both during and beyond the school day, especially for those experiencing housing instability and food insecurity. And from the board's input session on October 24th, to support legislation that promotes school construction that is environmentally sustainable and that supports healthy indoor and outdoor environmental practices. The final area of the 2025 legislative agenda addresses your autonomy and responsibilities as a school board. Like in our previous years, we firmly oppose any legislation or action that would limit or remove the school board's authority over policy and local requirements set for Henrico County Public Schools. Of course, in addition to these 2025 legislative priorities, the board holds other continuing positions that support a wide variety of other areas to enhance K-12 education in Henrico County and across the Commonwealth of Virginia. But these are the specific points of emphasis for our legislative advocacy this year. Again, we're asking you to approve these draft legislative priorities at your evening meeting tonight. And once approved, we will design and publish our annual one-page brochure for you to use with your constituents and to share with the community. You also recently received an invitation to our December 2 legislative luncheon to have an opportunity to share these priorities with our legislative delegation. And with that, Madam Chair, we are poised to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone, for the presentation. I'm going to start to my left for discussion. Mr. Irving, we'll begin with you.
Thank you for the presentation. I think this is a good review of everything that we covered previously. In an effort to be proactive, though, I would be remiss if I didn't say that we should add one item to the funding section. And I think we, you know, just being proactive, we should state that if there are any reductions or elimination of federal title and the National School Lunch Program, that the state will step in and fill that gap. And otherwise, I think everything looks great. Thank you.
Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone, for the presentation. Did have one question under academic achievement, which is, I think, the third slide. When it says support legislation to define the role of special education advocates. You said two years ago someone carried a bill. Did it get shot down? Did it get tabled? What happened? Do you remember or recall?
Yes, let me get to that. Academic achievements. That's it, right there? Yes. It essentially didn't make it out of, I think, the Senate Committee. We had a Senate bill, and it was discussed. It was mentioned, and it was voted on in the Subcommittee, the Senate Education and Health Subcommittee. And it just didn't pass.
Okay. Do we know if anyone's going to bring it up? Again, as of now?
I do not know that. What I plan to do is to approach some senators or delegates to see if they might be interested in that. My first thought was to go back to Senator Hashmi, who actually was the sponsor of this bill two years ago, and see if she might be interested in that as well. I know that she has a very full plate, and I'm not sure if she would be able to do that. But I did speak to her briefly at the VAS Legislative Conference a couple of weeks ago, and she said, "Let's talk." So.
Okay, awesome. Everything else looks good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mrs. Shea.
No questions or concerns for me at this time. I think it adequately reflects what we discussed, so thank you.
Mrs. Cincella.
I would agree. It does capture everything that we discussed, and it really centers around funding and removing barriers. And I would just like to once again remind every legislator in the state that everyone ran on education, so please fund it and fix it. Madam Chair.
So, Mr. Blackstone, thank you for your diligence in getting us to this moment, the opportunity for all of us to engage in discussion, to really use that exercise, to get it all together. And then the format in which you presented it this afternoon is wonderful. So job well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Blackstone, and we'll again be seeking approval at the evening meeting. The next items are a series of policy retirements and/or revisions for your review, and these are all related to efforts to consolidate grant-related policies and regulations, and would be seeking your approval on all of these in December. So simply for review at this time. The first one is the proposed retirement of policy P-9-04-003, federal funds. And the language from this policy will be in newly revised policy P-10-11-001. Are there any questions? Okay. For the next item, this is actually revisions to a policy P-10-11-001. And you'll see that this will become a larger consolidation policy, and then several are being recommended for retirement outside of this, given that overarching policy that will guide grant-related practices. That's being proposed here. No questions? All right. And so again, you can see related to that, three policies being recommended to be retired. That's P-10-11-002, also P-10-11-003, and P-10-11-004. And again, these would then be part of the newly revised policy, P-10-11-001, Grants Coordination. Are there any questions? All right. The next item we have is our annual look at the Academic and Career Planning Guide and associated updates. And Dr. Hughes and Liz Parker are coming forward to provide that presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Good afternoon, Chair Atkins, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Leslie Hughes, as Dr. Cashwell said, and I'm the Chief Learning Officer for Henrico County Public Schools. With me this evening is Liz Parker, Director of Student Support and Wellness. Together, we will present an overview of the 2025-2026 Academic and Career Planning Guide for the board's approval. We will also highlight how HCPS's ongoing commitment to providing a dynamic program of studies with continuously expanding opportunities empower students to graduate not only prepared, but with a clear plan to step confidently into their post-secondary life enrolled, enlisted, or employed. And we're back. In direct alignment with Destination 2025, academic and career planning continues to be an implementation driver for achieving academic excellence. In addition, careful and thoughtful academic and career planning will assist all students in developing the knowledge, skills, and attributes necessary to accomplish their life-ready goals. Before we move on, we would like to thank the many different departments, teams, and stakeholder groups, as shown on the screen, that met, reviewed information, and provided input over a period of months in order to develop the planning guide proposed this evening. And now I will turn the presentation over to Liz Parker, who will highlight the content revisions to the 2025-2026 Planning Guide, which we will ask the board to approve.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today's proposed provisions to the 2025-26 HCPS Planning Guide remain an important piece of a much larger puzzle that, when put together, provides HCPS students with access to the coursework and learning experiences that will assist them in meeting their individual educational and personal goals, graduate life-ready, and be prepared for multiple post-secondary pathways in today's rapidly evolving world of work. HCPS's online planning guide is a valuable resource that can be accessed anytime, anywhere, and from any device, including all HCPS-issued laptops provided to students annually. As a reminder, Wi-Fi hotspot devices are also available for students annually who do not have home internet access. To ensure that this planning guide is as user-friendly as possible, students and families can quickly navigate from the homepage directly to specific sections of interest, such as diploma requirements or general information, or course descriptions. Those who are new to the planning process or who just desire a much more guided experience have the option to navigate through the planning guide by utilizing a simple three-step career development process shown here. Importantly, the online planning guide can be translated into over 100 different languages with the click of a button, and personalized content of interest from the online planning guide can be printed out by any school as requested to support students and families in need of a hard copy. The online planning guide averages over 100,000 total page views annually, with peak page views occurring in November through January, which coincides with HCPS's course request timeline and targeted academic planning initiatives. Each year, the HCPS Planning Guide Committee works to continually enhance the site with accessibility and equity considerations at the forefront. With that in mind, this year, HCPS transitioned its online planning guide from an external-host site to HCPS's own content management system. Centralizing the planning guide on the Division's platform offers several key benefits, including a seamless, single-entry point that enhances access and usability, improved ADA compliance to ensure all content is accessible to individuals with disabilities, increased ability to update information efficiently and in real time, and enhance system security and reliability. But don't worry, we worked hard to ensure that all of the familiar features and tools that our students, families, and staff have come to rely on remain fully functional so that the 2025-26 Planning Guide continues to serve as a valuable, full-service resource that supports academic and career planning efforts across the Division. Of equal importance, a number of specific content changes and revisions were proposed for the 2025-26 Planning Guide. In an effort to provide the board and the school community with time to thoughtfully review each of these proposed updates and revisions, a detailed executive summary, as outlined on this slide, was provided in advance to the school board and was made available to the public in board docs. These proposed revisions ensure that the 2025-26 Planning Guide remains in alignment with the VDO standards of accreditation as well as HCPS policy, and include programmatic updates as well as updates to course offerings, course titles, course descriptions, and typical pathways across content areas. A number of new middle and high school courses were also recommended for consideration to ensure that HCPS students have access to timely and relevant coursework and learning experiences that prepare them to thrive in high-demand, high-wage careers that are evolving as quickly as the world around us. We will be asking the board to approve the proposed provisions detailed in the executive summary during this evening's monthly meeting. As you know, HCPS partners with Major Clarity, a student-driven, online college and career readiness platform designed to help all students in grades four through 12 discover future careers aligned with their interests and preferences and merge their career exploration with academic planning. Now in its fourth year of implementation, school counselors, case managers, and teachers across content areas are working together to support students with accessing their Major Clarity account, completing career inventories, engaging in career exploration and participating, and career-aligned academic planning within the platform. In fact, HCPS's continued commitment to engaging students and families with this tool once again earns the Major Clarity Power User status for 2023-24, one of the highest recognitions awarded to top-tier district users nationwide. This is just one example of how HCPS is committed to providing the support, resources, and opportunities that empower every student to graduate enrolled, enlisted, or employed. In fact, each spring, HCPS seniors complete a senior survey utilizing the Major Clarity platform to share information about their potential planned post-secondary pathways. For the 2024 graduating class, 77% of students reported plans to continue education through a four-year or two-year college, or they have other educational plans. Additionally, 12% aim to seek employment opportunities, and 2% plan to enlist in the military. Comparing this to 2019, the first year of our strategic plan, we observe a decrease in the percentage of graduates pursuing post-secondary education and an increase in those seeking immediate employment after high school. This data highlights the diversity of student goals upon leaving HCPS and provides valuable direction for the school division to tailor learning opportunities that support student success. Learning opportunities that may include engaging in advanced-level coursework. And over the past five years, HCPS has significantly expanded opportunities for students to do just that. As you can see on this slide, since the 2018-19 academic year, we have observed consistent growth in both AP Advanced Placement and Dual Enrollment Offerings across our Division. AP course sections have increased by 35%, reflecting our commitment to academic rigor. Additionally, by removing dual enrollment fees and strategically identifying new partnerships as well as qualified educators within our high schools, we have boosted the availability of these courses by 30%. Most important is ensuring equitable access to advanced-level coursework in high school. This slide showcases our progress in enrollment from the launch of our strategic plan in 2018-19 through 2023-24, focusing on data from each graduating class. To analyze this data across student demographics, we utilize an Equity Index formula. This formula helps identify groups that may be under or overrepresented. A score below one indicates under-representation, while above one signifies over-representation. Comparing the two periods, while there have been improvements, we observe ongoing opportunities for growth regarding representation of students with disabilities and English learners in advanced coursework. Similarly, while we do see a more equitable representation in advanced-level coursework among students who identify as Black, Hispanic, or economically disadvantaged, there remains opportunities for growth here as well. Notably, all groups identified by the Equity Index as underrepresented in advanced high school coursework have experienced growth from 2018 and 19 to 2023-24. And with that in mind, HCPS remains committed to continuing efforts to expand access to advanced-level coursework for all students. In addition to the coursework identified on those previous slides, HCPS has expanded learning opportunities and career and technical education have resulted in students pursuing coursework that prepares them for a number of industry, professional, or trade association certification examinations. occupational competency assessments, and professional licenses. In fact, HCPS has seen a significant increase over the past three years in the number of students earning a Board of Education-approved industry credential while also pursuing a high school diploma. This provides several benefits to students, including adding value to a transcript for higher education or obtaining an entry-level position, providing evidence of advanced educational preparation and skill areas in demand by business and industry, and increasing job opportunities for advancement and chosen career paths. Furthermore, HCPS has seen a steady increase over the past three years in the number of students enrolled into a Junior Reserve Officer Training Core Course, or JROTC. As you can see on this slide, HCPS's Military Sciences coursework enriches our program of studies, builds lifelong durable skills such as leadership, teamwork, and accountability, and provides students with hands-on opportunities to explore multiple post-secondary pathways for consideration. And now, students participating in a JROTC course have the option to use their participation as fulfillment of a physical education requirement upon successful course completion. Students choosing this option will enroll in a separate health course, thus having the opportunity to earn one full credit towards their health and PE requirement for both standard and advanced studies diplomas in addition to earning a credit for the JROTC course itself. And all of that information shared today is reflective of HCPS's commitment to position every student to graduate ready for successful enrollment, enlistment, or employment, and will be shared with HCPS students and families through an established, ongoing communication plan that includes both Division and school-level outlets. This communication will also highlight the next steps and upcoming dates shown here to assist all students entering sixth through 12th grades in the 25-26 school year and their families in preparing for the two-week HCPS Course Request Window, which is set to open January 6 and run through January 20. The Course Request Window now includes two full weeks and weekends, further ensuring that students and families have the time they need for careful course planning and selection. School-specific details and information about the Course Request process will be communicated by the school directly to students, parents, and guardians. And school counselors are available in every school to answer questions, address concerns, and work in partnership with families to support all HCPS students in creating tailored, future-focused academic paths to assist in meeting their educational and career goals.
Thank you for providing this opportunity to share the proposed revisions to the 2025-2026 Planning Guide as well as the details about our ongoing college and career readiness initiatives and robust academic planning as we continue to work with our HCPS students in discovering their future career paths and obtaining knowledge, skills, and experiences and attributes that can make this a reality. At this time, Liz Parker and I will be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you for the presentation. This time, I'll start to my right with Mrs. Cincella.
Thank you so much. Wow, the planning guide has certainly transformed over the years. Very excited with the online capability in so many languages, I mean, over 100 languages, as well as the printable upon request. Because I know, especially in our multi-family committee meetings, that we've heard that
Yes.
requests from some of our community partners as well as folks in our schools. So I'm grateful for that. I guess I'll jump around perhaps a little bit. JROTC offering? That's tremendous.
Yes.
That's tremendous. Do we, because I don't think we do, do we offer JROTC in all of our high schools?
It's an excellent question. We do not offer in all of our high schools, but it is offered in six high schools currently. And so all students have the opportunity to participate in JROTC. And so students are able to go to a high school that offers a JROTC program.
Okay, and students are aware of that? I mean, they're made aware in
Correct.
the language? Okay.
Yep.
I didn't see that in the executive summary. And then, on page six of the executive summary, which I'll reference for you, where it discusses specialty centers and ACE centers, it says both of which can be completed in eighth grade in terms of the application. It doesn't capture how you can apply again at the end of sophomore year for your junior year for the ACE programming.
Okay. Yep, we can definitely go back and take a look at that. I'm looking here to see, and we'll go back. So this is just a revision, but I'll go back to the full planning guide to see what the rest of the language is. Absolutely.
And then where it discusses SOLs, I believe that's also page six in the executive summary. And again, I don't know if the full language is out there, but where it talks about the local performance assessments, and it offers local performance assessments are available for World One, World History One, World Geography, Virginia and U.S. History, and English Ten. What are there? Isn't there also a local performance assessment for English XI? Or no?
No, the students complete the writing assessment part of the local assessment in their 10th-grade year, and then they take the reading assessment in their 11th-grade year.
But that's what I'm saying. Isn't there also, when it speaks to substitute alternate assessments, isn't there also an alternate assessment for English XI reading?
No, not for English XI reading.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for the
Yes.
Thank you for the clarity.
The writing SOL or the English SOL contains a reading portion and a writing portion.
Okay.
If school divisions who do not qualify for the alternative assessment, their students take both portions in the 11th grade. And in Rico County Public Schools, because we're a school of innovation, we qualify for that local awarded, the alternative writing piece, which we do with our 10th-grade students. So the students take the writing piece in 10th grade, and then in 11th grade, they take the reading portion.
Okay, I thought there was an alternate assessment in 11th grade as well.
Yeah, I do not believe so.
Okay.
I'll make sure I double-check, but I'm 99.9% confident.
Okay, and then I'd just like to acknowledge the other additions of our programming in addition to our JROTC offerings, our Health and Medical Science classes, Hospitality and Tourism, Plumbing and Fire Protection Sprinkler Program. Very excited to offer, and some of these are the first in the state, are they not?
They are, absolutely. The Plumbing and Fire Protection Sprinkler fitting is actually coursework that we are developing in collaboration with the Virginia Department of Education. Very exciting.
Very exciting stuff. And then lastly, on Slide 8 of this presentation, where it said that 8% of our students, there was no response as to what were they doing, enrolling, enlisting, or going into employment? I'd like to see that number go to zero.
We would as well.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea.
Thank you. I'm a little all over the place, so I'm going to use my teacher conference strategies and use a sandwich approach, if that's okay. First of all, just some things I noticed that I'm really excited about. The fact that students in one of our specialty centers have the opportunity to take dual enrollment multivariable calculus in high school is just beyond, right? That is, as a math person, that's very extraordinary. I love seeing the expansion of ASL for a foreign language. Is that now available to students in all high schools? I know we initially piloted just three, but have we expanded that?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. I saw also the addition of Spanish 1 and 2 for fluent speakers.
Yes.
I assume that's focusing on the literacy aspect a little more since the conversation. Is that, am I correct in thinking about how that class would be structured?
Yes, you are correct.
And is that available at all of our high schools or depending on enrollment and population need?
Like most of our courses, depending on enrollment. And students actually, we're developing a student self-assessment tool, which is what helps us determine student placement into both courses.
Awesome, thank you so much. I also love seeing the addition of the Think Law. I know we are utilizing that in some of our elementary schools as talking with the GAC, and to see that as a little more of a structured opportunity for middle school slash high school. I think that really expands our, you know, thinking about these critical thinking skills, these soft skills, these skills that go beyond content and how to apply content and thinking. And so I think, I just think that's a really exciting opportunity for students who want to take advantage of it. Something else, not particularly in here, but just want to give a shout out to my middle school. And there might be other middle schools doing this too, but I only represent Quackason, like Moccasin. And a little shout out to Ms. O'Bannon there. And so I want to give them a shout out. When they have the, they're having fifth-grade field trip over to the school. But part of that is they're doing a performance of a lot of their different performance groups and showing off electives so that students can really understand what their different elective choices are, which I thought was a really neat opportunity for the students in the middle school to display their skills, but also for the students at the elementary school to find what really excites them and gives them passion to connect with the school. So shout out to the Q. Speaking of electives in middle school, and I don't know if this is more a question for y'all or for Dr. Cashwell, but at some point, we discussed a little bit about the possibility of making tag. So the tag class right now is optional in seventh and eighth grade, but at one point, it was mandatory in sixth grade. And there had been some conversation about making that similar across all the grades so that it's an option for sixth graders, but not mandatory. Where did that, where did that come out? Where are we with that?
We can definitely look into that and get you the answer for that question. I don't want to misspeak or misrepresent tag, but I will absolutely get back to you on that.
Awesome, and so my follow-up to that is, if there's a change, or even if not, if there's not a change, there's still confusion on that. I think that middle school counselors, as well as the fifth-grade counselors, would really benefit from some explicit clarity around that. And if it is mandated slash highly encouraged, but there's an opt-out ability or anything like that, just more information about that. I know there's a lot of confusion there.
Absolutely.
But I will just give my personal tag, and this is one board member's opinion, not all of ours. I just want to be very clear with that. But as students transfer into middle school, I think it's so important that they pick what resonates with them as opportunities to plug into the school. And if that's tag, that's really great. I love that. But if they need to use that space for another elective that speaks more to them in plugging in the community, I think they should have that opportunity as well. So just throwing that out there. And then, one concern I saw, when I was looking at the middle school pathways for math, only one of the middle school pathways is a non-algebra in eighth grade, by eighth grade or in eighth grade option. And so I just, are we moving towards trying to push most students to take Algebra I by eighth grade?
So it's my understanding that we are not an Algebra I for all in eighth-grade school division and that there are other options available for students based on where they are.
And that's, I think, absolutely how it should be. As someone who saw a lot of outcomes of not having a strong Algebra I foundation and how that can impact not only future math ability but future science ability and all of that, I think it's so important to have those fundamentals. And so just when I looked at the possible pathways and only saw one that was not an Algebra I, I just want to make sure that we are putting students where is developmentally appropriate for them. And just like literacy is so core for success afterwards, I really believe that a strong Algebra I foundation is so fundamental for success afterwards. And so if students aren't ready, I really don't want to be pushing them right into something that they're not going to be successful in that's going to create further challenges down the road. So it's just when I saw that flow chart and just one branch, I know that each branch does not represent equally, right, the number of students enrolled in it, but just wanted to flag that as a concern. And then to end my sandwich, because right, we have to end our sandwich with some positives, but I really have, like Ms. Cincella said, appreciated the transformation of the planning guide over the last, gosh, I started in the county, what, 16 years, 17 years ago? And it has transformed so much that between the, with the clarity, the translation ability, and the accessibility. And so thank you for y'all's team's continuous work on that because I think this is how, this is a lot to digest. It's, and your team continuously, along with Ms. Cox's team, continuously makes it more digestible and more understandable. And that is setting our students and our families up for success. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, that's the goal.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Dr. Hughes and Ms. Parker for the presentation. I only have a couple of questions. Are dual enrollment courses offered at all high schools?
This year, dual enrollment courses are offered at all high schools. That's correct.
And I guess a follow-up question. Do we have any students in Henrico County that take, I guess, classes at like a JSarge? That's not associated, I guess they call it concurrent enrollment almost. Do we have any numbers on how many students we have that choose to do that route?
So we do have students that choose to do that. And I don't have numbers in front of me right now. And often, we wouldn't know that unless the student wants to let us know, because it wouldn't be a dual enrollment, so they wouldn't necessarily give us the transcript to transfer back.
Okay.
Yeah, and often they'll do that in the summer or they'll do that outside of the school day. But the numbers aren't high, because a lot of times, high school students obviously want credit, high school credit for the courses that they take at JSarge on the campus or online.
Right, okay, thank you. And then one more other question. As I was looking at some of the program offerings, I saw, and you may not be able to answer this because it's under CTE, but I started seeing carpentry 3, electricity and cable in 3, masonry 3. They go in as juniors into CTE. So how do they, how do they offer that Level 3 course if it's only a two-year program?
It's a great question. So we worked this year, CTE and the VDO, we worked together. And so courses kind of separated from being year-long to semester-based. And so that's, that's where that difference came in this year.
Thank you for clarifying that. No other questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Irving.
Thank you all for the presentation. The course guide is tremendous. My focus is more on the data. So I have some, I just have a question about the enroll-enlist. Was a post-secondary reduction, which is totally fine. Colleges should certainly not have to be the goal for everybody. The increase in employment, is that due to CTE primarily? Or are we just finding more folks are just?
Yeah, I think, I think that could be due to a variety of different factors.
Yeah, I would just be interested if we have like exit surveys on the students and kind of figuring out what, what it is. The next one is the expanding opportunities, the advanced coursework. So we had a reduction in dual enrollment section counts. Is that just due to lack of teachers to teach those courses?
From 22 to 23 from the school year. It could have been from, again, it could have been a variety of different things. We can dive, certainly dive deeper.
And I just found it notable because the AP section counts are going up, but the dual enrollment dipped. So I was just curious if there was a, if it was, we were running into challenges and just in terms of the requirements to actually teach a dual enrollment.
Well, we also started, we also had some more AP options open, and so there was just more variety of coursework. So I think that also could have come into play there as well.
More dual enrollment too.
Yeah.
And then the last one was the expanding opportunities, the industry credentialing.
Yes.
There's obviously been a huge, almost 2,000 credential expansion. And I'm just curious why exactly that happened? Was it there's more credentials available? Is it more interest? Are there more seats for these? Like what was the?
I don't, and I certainly don't want to speak for Mac or his team at CTE.
Certainly, a significant number of seats were added with the expansion of our ACE centers. So I think that speaks to it. And then more opportunities continue to be added for credentials. So oftentimes, a student may be earning more than one.
So it could be a combination of those or just, and just more students entering. All right, that's terrific.
And also CTE efforts, right? CTE efforts to encourage students to continue taking industry credentials that might be related to their areas of interest.
I mean, all the CTE offerings makes me wish that I could take some classes on carpentry so I can learn how to do more things around the house.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you for the presentation. I do have a few questions. And then just excited and have some compliments as well. So I'll start with the questions. The first one is, are there any variations that are spelled out in the guide for our Henrico Virtual students?
For coursework? Coursework?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So they're offered the same, the same courses as all of our students in the Planning Guide. So right now, there aren't any specific courses that are targeted just for Henrico Virtual Academy, if I'm understanding the question.
Yeah, you are. I'm wondering, as families are planning with their kids, if you have an HVA student, specifically, let's say you decide JROTC, does the Planning Guide spell out any variations if your child decides? Because again, they're virtual, they're not in the building. So there are some, some things that you would do differently if you are a virtual student. And that's just an example using JROTC. Does the Planning Guide spell that out?
Well, it might be part of their application process as well.
I did want to know, it's not in the Planning Guide, but when students are opting into the Virtual Academy or they're expressing interest, it's made clear that that will limit because the potential options, if they're looking for a fully virtual experience. So for example, JROTC has in-person requirements.
Right.
And so that would allow a family and student to have those conversations and make decisions about what might be the best fit.
And so thank you for sharing that. That's exactly my point. So if you are a parent and you are planning and you see JROTC, that comes before the application process. You are still planning, you're still noodling over. I wonder if there's an opportunity to just add a sentence or two. Maybe it's an asterisk saying, please seek more information so that you can plan accordingly. So that's something to, just to consider. The other question that I had was around performance assessments. And oftentimes, you may have students that are in our exceptional education programming. They may not take the standard assessment. So can you share with me how those numbers are included in the data in the presentation? Or are they?
Well, any student who is accessing special education courses or coursework or that's on the track for a standard diploma who would participate in these assessments would be included in these numbers. Now, our special education students who might not be on a standard diploma and might take other assessments, such as our VAP assessment, then they would not be included in these numbers.
So how do we have a better understanding? Because we do have, I believe, and please keep me candid, but we do have a significant amount of exceptional education students that may not pursue or have the opportunity to receive the standard diploma. So how, if you are a parent with an exceptional education student, plan without understanding that?
We have an entire, the Planning Guide actually does have an entire sections in the course description specific for exceptional education. And you can see in the executive summary, we just don't often have a lot of revisions to that section. But you can see here that there is actually a new course added to that section for exceptional education students and families. And it's in here, but in course descriptions for both middle and high school, we have a full course, a full course listing, of course, descriptions specific for our exceptional education classes.
Thank you for that. I'm very interested in that. As well as I would like to know what those numbers are. Since they're not included in this presentation, I think it would be helpful for all board members to know what those numbers look like.
Definitely. And we're actually very excited about the new course that was added. We think that's going to be just a really fantastic opportunity for a number of students. And it was brought through the new course proposal process by our exceptional education team.
Fantastic. I'm eager to learn more about it. As we were going through this, I was just trying to think of individuals with all abilities. And as a parent and you're planning and using this guide, how helpful is it for you? So thank you for that. Let's see. I had some other stuff here. Also grateful for the inclusion of the new credit-bearing health courses that allow our JROTC students to choose JROTC for their health and PE credit. And so for the public, I did want to spell that out for those who don't quite follow all of this in detail. So JROTC students can take these courses in place of their traditional health PE requirements for ninth and 10th graders. And the change offers students the flexibility to fulfill their health education requirements while participating in JROTC. So just want to make sure we're clear. Can you also add to that?
I can, yeah. So I want to make a quick note. It's just for the physical education component. So students, yep, so it meets that physical education component. And so we also will have a .5 health course that they will take in addition that can meet the health component.
Is that spelled out in the Planning Guide? Okay, good, that's all that matters.
It is.
Thank you, thank you.
So a JROTC course, you will get the credit for JROTC, which is great. And then you will get kind of a .5 for the physical education component. And then you would just take that additional health component. And by doing that, you will meet the full health and PE requirement as well as get a JROTC credit.
And all of that is spelled out in this Planning Guide?
Yep, it's in general information as well in each course description.
And just for the sake of clarity, for all that are listening, please do a recap of what you said.
Yes, absolutely. So if you are successfully completing a JROTC course and choose for that to meet your physical education requirement, then you will get a full credit for taking the JROTC course. And then you also will have met your physical education piece of your health and physical education requirement for graduation. So you will just need to take that .5 health component. And once you take that .5 health component, you will then have a full additional credit for health and PE 9. And then the same is true for health and PE 10.
I will start with saying, you do not have to answer in this moment. But here's the question. What happens now that it's separated if you complete one component and not the other?
So both are required for the state diploma. Yep, you're required to have two full credits of health and physical education, nine and 10 in order to meet the state diploma requirements. But I will tell you, we've actually backtracked, and it's actually been quite helpful for students who have passed, let's say, last year, have passed their JROTC course, but maybe did not pass their health and PE course. We can actually go to them this year and have them just take the health component to receive a full health and PE and move forward.
I think they've covered it. I was going to add some additional context, but I think that's a good example.
Thank you for that example. I think those are the things when you're planning and you're thinking through as a parent, you're thinking through all these different scenarios. And so I'm pleased that you're sharing this now. Another question that I have is, outside of ACA and ACE students, do all schools offer dual enrollment?
Yes. Not all schools, not all schools offer the exact same dual enrollment courses. But all schools at this point do offer dual enrollment.
Well, I'm going to send it right over to you.
Outside of the centers, all schools offer it. Outside of specialty centers, outside of ACE centers?
Correct.
You can access dual enrollment in every high school across Henrico schools? The course offerings just differ?
That is my understanding, yes. But let me triple, quadruple check for you.
It is correct.
It is correct. That was our, that was our goal this year. And we worked hard to make additional partnerships with the Ed Equity Lab and other folks to make that, make that happen.
I know we're also looking to increase it year by year by year, but I knew where Ms. Atkins was trying to go with that. So thank you very much. Chair Atkins.
And I'm going to pause and see if there's any follow-ups. We've had some discussions, so we're good. Mrs. Shea.
Well, not about dual enrollment. I have a redirect from something else when you're done.
Yes, go ahead.
Are there, so going back to our JROTC physical education requirement, are there other, outside of JROTC, other ways a student can earn that .5 for physical activity other than JROTC or taking the class?
Not at this time.
Is that a legislative boundary?
Correct.
That's correct.
So perhaps something we could advocate for? All right, good to know, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes items from me.
The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Colleagues, do you have any unfinished business?
I do, Madam Chair.
And the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is just a quick question for Dr. Cashwell. Do you have an estimate as to when we may get a public update on the possible solutions to the capacity issues we discussed at the last meeting?
So based on feedback from board members, and I know the specific areas, you had concerns related to capacity with Freeman.